Tuesday, May sixteenth, Committee of the Whole. We have four matters on the agenda today. Before we begin, I wanted to just remind everyone at the floor, we'll be open to the audience for twenty minutes, to address the City Council on matters that are on the agenda after the City Council discusses the items with staff. If that person's wishing to address the City Council, keep their comments to five minutes in length. The comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor, and profanity may not be used in any form. So with that, our first item on the agenda is our 2023 Business Development Strategic Plan Project. And to that, we will defer to Martha Corner.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. I'm pleased to announce that the city is going to be undertaking its first-ever development of a business development strategic plan initiative. This will take approximately order completion. We should complete it by the end of 2023. And upon its completion, the plan will detail ambitious set of strategies and actions to support the local economy. The purpose of the plan is to develop a set of actionable strategies and actions to support economic activity and growth within the community. The business climate throughout the Chicago area, and parts beyond for that matter, is evolving with the rise of economic shift to consumer habits as far as what habits, all of which were exacerbated by the pandemic. The plan will include robust evaluation of these paradigm shifts, and the goal is to unfold from our plan to ensure continued business vitality in Rolling Meadows. Purposefully robust in scope, the effort will involve a series of focus group discussions among city staff members, elected leaders, EDC members, local business owners, state representatives, and other key constituencies, including residents. The city will undertake research of best practices in business development, product analysis of existing demographic and economic conditions, and complete a full review of Rolling Meadows' current business development policies, activities, and programs. So with that being said, I'm just going to give you kind of the big picture of what we're going to be addressing. The overall goals of the plan are to articulate the natural business development strategy and action plan, involve local stakeholders and leaders, so there's more communication and investigation in developing the plan, adapt to changing business conditions, develop programs to ensure business development to encourage investment, and set the plan framework for our plan to rise and subject to review after three years or update. The platform for the city is multi-genius, beginning with business protection and attraction, marketing and public education, local range of partnerships, local organization organizations at local and state levels, policy considerations such as city tax and incentive policies, administrative process such as, etc., excuse me, what's next? Development and redevelopment, development position and strategies, as well as internal structural improvements. The general process for the course of the development for July 2023, we did have a meeting with the academic development committee in April, and we supported the outline as proposed. We're here today for the committee of input to allow you to pitch a lot, because of focus group meetings, it's a resolute report. In July, we'll have the council board to discuss business development initiatives. In August, we'll turn to the EDC to prepare the feedback, which will wrap the plan in August and September and October, while the EDC will be able to wrap the plan and the council, and we'll have a fair as a plan and hold open house. So that's basically what's going to be following up in the course of the year as an exciting project. It's an exercise in investigation and communication and cooperation. That being said, we have just two key questions. Does the council have my feedback on the planning process? And are there any others that may have been missed from our plan that should be included? The work plans are in the packet that we should have previously received, so.
Thank you, Business Development Manager Martha Corner. So we have two requests of the council, so we'll go with the first, which is, is there any feedback on the plan that we'd like to present to staff at this time? Okay. No feedback so far? And then the second?
Is, or there are others that may have been missed from our work plan.
Okay. It looks like no noise is good news so far. We look forward to the timeline that's been presented before us.
You're the priority too. Thank you, ma'am.
With that, we have no signatories on the sign sheet regarding this item, so we'll move on to item two, which is the comprehensive and sub-area planning discussion. To that, we will defer to our Assistant City Manager Glenn Cole.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So a brief presentation again to prime your discussion. We have two planning discussions this evening. The first is about really our comprehensive, our aspirations to do some comprehensive and sub-area planning work with some RFP parallel funding that's available in the budget. So first, again, a bit of a primer for everyone, make sure we're working off the same page. I think everyone, many members of the council previously went through the city's comprehensive plan update process, 2018, 2019, and I know we've spoken with new council members about this process, but in short, a comprehensive plan, it looks a little different for us as a landlocked or fully developed community. In many places, it's called the growth management plan or general plan. It looks different in different places, but essentially, we're trying to chart out the spatial, the land use considerations for the city for an extended period of time, probably about twenty years. This has legal implications, so this is the policy foundation of zoning. Our zoning code is supposed to implement the policies that are here in the plan. We're supposed to administer it consistent with the plan, although the plan itself is in law. And again, this creates continuity in decision-making and reflects really our local priorities. The city last updated this in 2019, so this is, all things considered, a very fresh plan, a very new plan. Most plans in Chicago are much older. I'd say the average is probably between twenty and thirty years old. I'd say most communities are probably overdue for an update at this point. And on the right-hand side, you can see some of the priorities that were outlined in this plan, which is, you know, the sense of place, the people and the housing, the things that make Rolling Meadows special, transportation, environment, infrastructure. But even though, you know, this is a relatively fresh plan, we're still talking about making some changes, because there have been two big macro level changes that happened recently. The first, of course, is COVID-19, by which we don't mean specifically the pandemic itself, but the social changes that came with it. When we talk about working from home, when we talk about commuting patterns, when we talk about the financial market and the real estate market, those all look radically different now than when the plan was passed in April 2019. The second, of course, is the potential redevelopment of Arlington International Racecourse as the future home of the Chicago Bears. In short, we're looking at two subareas, and I would characterize them this way. In the northwest industrial district, change will happen. You know, we have an older tendency, we have a lot of larger sites that can be redeveloped quickly, and whether or not the Bears come to town, ultimately, I think that this position of Arlington International Racecourse, the development, the traffic that'll bring, will spill over into these areas. The second is more, so we need to plan ahead for that. The second is more of an opportunity. The city has always had aspirations around the Kershaw Road corridor. You know, twenty, thirty years ago, the investments were made into this streetscape that you see in front of you, into getting wider sidewalks, into getting an attractive bridge and used sheds in the Salt Creek, into building the bell tower. And this, the Bears coming to town and these changes, I think, really give the city a chance to harness some of that change already happening, and perhaps to make some changes that can ensure that that corridor continues to have some vitality. So again, in Kershaw Road, the scope we envisioned putting out for a consultant frames this as really helping to facilitate the shift from a traditional, you know, automotive-oriented district to more of a pedestrian-oriented downtown, something that serves more as, less as a shopping center and more as like a lifestyle amenity, is something that is a destination really oriented towards local residents, but that can still, you know, have a sense of place, can capture visitors to this redeveloped Arlington Racecourse. And again, in the northwest industrial district, the comprehensive plan today envisions that there's not much traffic, there won't be much interest in retail. That's not true anymore because of the proximity, because of the age of the structures, and because of, you know, the price that they probably will command in the market. Change here will happen rapidly, and we think it's very important to be ahead of that and to be ahead of some of the changes that are happening in the markets. Finally, there are some connecting areas in the vicinity of the park, Rolling Road and Hicks Road near Route 53. These aren't large enough to be traditional subareas, but we're already seeing pressures applied in this area. We're already seeing interest in multifamily development. There are some particular sensitivities here with single-unit residential along much of the frontage, probably encompassing these in some of our planning work and getting some strategies, even if not the same depth of planning, will be important. So for next steps, we envision that this would be roughly a ten-to-sixteen month planning process. This is relatively aggressive. I mean, it's not the fastest you can go, but it's pretty fast. Again, we're envisioning for a budget, can always come in less, but we're trying to tool this scope to be around seventy to eighty thousand. Again, taken from RFP parallel money, of which there's two hundred thousand in the budget. What we're asking for tonight from the mayor and council is feedback generally on the scope, as more, you know, specifically described in the memo, and then after that feedback, we hope for a direction to proceed with this project.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. So first and foremost, do we have any feedback regarding the sub-area planning and the desire to go with a consultant? Yes, Alderman Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, I think it's broken out into like four different subareas, so we'll look at it encompassing. Or like, are you looking for prioritization too from the council? Is that, hey, we should focus on area one versus area four, or this would be all encompassing?
Yeah, so the comprehensive plan identified four subareas in total. Two of them, we talked about the other two are located in the south part of town. We could do valuable planning in all of those areas. We think the needs are most urgent in the two we've talked about today, and we would, they would have equal priority in the RFP that's going out.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other feedback? Alderman Kohler.
Thank you, Mayor Sanika. To count on some feedback, one is hopefully we, when we do the plan, we incorporate sustainability concepts into the plan. And the second thing is place making, because I think to maintain a commercial environment today, where retail's changing so rapidly as to how people do retail shopping, it's about getting people to places where they can come downtown and more or less hang out. So place making is an important thing to get into the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kohler. And then to add to that, since we had brought up the 2019 comprehensive plan that had been adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council at that time, is the ultimate goal to use the consultant to amend the comprehensive plan going forward as well? Or is this planning, is this a separate endeavor?
Yes, so different communities do this in different ways. I would suggest that the final outcome of this is amendments to the comprehensive plan. So that does involve a bit of a formal legal process. You have to do a public hearing, and that goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the City Council. I think whichever way you were to do it, and I should have spoke about this as well, forgive me, but you know, there are opportunities for public participation, for public feedback throughout this process, much like the first comprehensive planning process. This is, this is not a bunch of guys in a room with pencils, so this is a collaborative effort.
Yeah, and to that, I think one of the challenges that had taken place during the 2019 process was identifying opportunities to solicit feedback. I know that there had been some open house events here at City Hall, as well as some presence at some of our wind down by the creek examples. I see Alderman O'Brien also shaking his head, because he was also a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission at that time. And, and there was a struggle to get a lot of feedback and a lot of diverse feedback. So I think one thing that I would like to see is that as we're pursuing this planning and having resident feedback, that there's a, an effort to make sure that we don't just have, or rather, that we expand and learn from the experience in 2019 to ensure that all that feedback's incorporated. Yes, Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Sir. Just two quick points as follow. I was wondering, is there any potential, because when I saw the wayfinding times in here, I remember going back to Planning and Zoning Commission, we had some very good discussion on, was that a park district sign thing, or is that a city sign thing? So is there any thought on collaborating, not necessarily like a full thing, but like with the park district, or maybe what's identified by the consultant? We would engage with them, because I know that was just seeing the wayfindings, how it was a big topic in conversation with Planning and Zoning at the time, is, well, how do we know that the sports center and the hockey rink, we're one of, I think the only suburb that has two ice rinks, but we don't have a way to get people there? I remember that from the Planning and Zoning days. And another point, too, I'm all for this, but I'm like, from a budgeting perspective, this comes back, and obviously, we'd have to prioritize this council with staff's help, and I'm totally making this up, ten million dollars. If we're at ten to sixteen months out, would that put us into the 2025 budget cycle potentially? Or are we going to maybe do like a, we could rank order, I know this is probably put in the cart before the horse, if I'm just wondering, like, from a financial thing, should we, as we start to go into the budget process, not too many months off, start thinking about earmarking some more like we did two hundred thousand this year for use in 2024? If there's some low hanging fruit, we could get done.
Certainly.
Let me jump out and then get back into that. So your timing is correct, as far as the timeline of when some of these economic impacts will begin to hit. With sub-area planning, it isn't, it doesn't set forth a immediacy necessarily. It kind of creates a vision that can be implemented over time. Certainly, we know that with whatever happens at Arlington Park, there may be that immediacy need that we may be looking towards, and we'll be looking at various funding mechanisms by which we get to that. But we'll start to think about how we begin to incorporate some of the financial impacts. And part of that may be incorporating that into the five-year CIP, and some of that will be infrastructure, some of it may be non-infrastructure expenses related to wayfinding signage and things like that. So once we get through the majority of the plan and really get a finalized, updated document, at that point, we'll start putting dollars to some of those expenses, as well as timelines, and that'll come back to the council through the budgeting process.
Perfect. Thanks for the overview on the process.
Thank you. Alderman Kohler.
Thank you, Mayor Sanika. Two other feedbacks, as I looked at your presentation and your handout that you sent to us in the packet, I think it's very good, so compliments on that. But you asked for other things that I didn't see in here, that I thought might add to it, a focus on small business, so in looking and talking to our small businesses, because I think the Kershaw Road corridor is mainly going to be developed by recruiting small businesses into the area. So let's get a discussion going with some of our smaller businesses. The second thing I think is important is art and culture, and I've talked to a few people in the community about this. We, you know, art and culture bring people together, things like music and concerts, and I don't know if this is true, but I heard that our opera in focus may not be here going forward. I heard that in the street. And that concerns me, because that's what brings people, those kind of events, the high school performances, the concerts in the park, there should be a specific part of the strategic plan that talks about art and culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kohler. Any other feedback on the sub-area planning proposal here? Yes, Alderman Kohler?
Just because we were having discussions about technology before we started our meeting today, but I feel like Rolling Meadows has an opportunity, being as small as we are in between much larger communities, to maybe look at some technology-based infrastructure, you know, redevelopments, maybe even looking at any sort of grants or opportunities, or being like the, like kind of guinea pig of certain, you know, newer technologies that are out there. Since we are, you know, we would be a little bit less expensive to put those things to implement to see like what would work in maybe a larger community or something of that nature, which is completely out of my wheelhouse, so there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kohler. Any other feedback at this time? Okay, so we got some feedback on scope, and it sounds like that from the commentary, it's not that we shouldn't do this, but that we should do more. Did you require any additional direction at this time?
Yeah, I think we're going to go back and take a look at this. I mean, one of the questions dynamics, I think we can work out, and I'm looking here also to our deputy director, Elizabeth Quadras, but you know, some of these topics, like art and culture, like sustainability, we can certainly make sure, like technology, we certainly make sure they are in the sub-area planning work too. Those are kind of, for better or for worse, they're absent from the comprehensive plan in general. As we're going through this amendment process, you know, the consultant needs to do that. This is specialized, high-intensity work. It does give us a chance to look at some other topics as well that we can bring through at the same time. We can see if we can work, we're going to plan to address those issues more directly instead of, you know, I wouldn't want them to be lost in the shuffle here. But I think heard, I think good points. With that said, I don't think we need any additional direction aside from the go-ahead to issue this RFP, if that's desired.
Yeah, and so that's, I was just checking that, you know, we'll just make this a little more fun. Can you give a straw vote, those in favor of pursuing the RFP? Okay, it's unanimous. Very good. Thank you very much, Assistant City Manager Cole. And there has been a request to move the third item to last, so we will instead move on to the fourth item, which is a rebranding initiative for the city of Rolling Meadows as well. And to that, we have, we'll defer to City Manager Rob Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor Sanika, City Council. Good evening. I have a brief presentation that goes along with the memo that was included in the packet, and we'll kind of jump right into it. Some of the presentation, we'll use what we will call buzzwords, but when you talk about branding, you talk about pop culture and modernization, a lot of that revolves around these types of terminology. I think the first question that needs to be asked is why consider rebranding? Why now? Why, why is this something that's worth investigating? First and foremost, I think we are, we are facing, and not only in Rolling Meadows, the northwest suburban area, in evolution in some ways. So our community is evolving. We know that Arlington Park, which is, once upon a time was in Rolling Meadows, and is by and large encircled in many respects by Rolling Meadows, is going to be different than it is today, and that'll bring traffic and additional population into our community, and investment, and economic interest. And in addition to that, you know, we're upgrading our room in here. We're looking at different ways that we can bring Rolling Meadows not only into the 21st century, well beyond that, because I think much of what our efforts are with the City Council, with staff, is trying to think, trying to think and stay ten steps ahead of what the new curve is and how we can continue to remain competitive and set ourselves apart amongst the suburbs that we are surrounded by. Society is also evolving, so we talked about technology, which was brought up. You know, we had talked a little bit about, there's, there's new technology out there that can write a memo for you. It's the chat GPT of the world, and those things are starting to integrate. There was a Senate hearing today in DC that talked about, Senator Boonathall brought up how his memo and introduction of his statement was actually written by chat GPT and deep faked by a chat GPT type of system. So technology in the world is just really evolving rapidly around us. Furthermore, I think what we are aiming to do is pursue investment in the community. So when, when our team started here in Rolling Meadows, we said that we were going to put our foot down on the gas really heavily on trying to find economic development opportunities, and I think that we're really revving up. We have developments that are proposing to come into our community that are asking us, how can we incorporate your brand into our development? We want to put your brand in the forefront of what it is that we are building here. And that, once again, brings up the opportunity for us to ask ourselves, what should that brand be? You know, is it, are we happy with the current brand, or do we want to evolve and take a look at that? And so that when they are building and incorporating design components into their end product, we are able to put something in there that's going to be as part of that development for many years to come. Regional awareness is a big one as well. Again, you know, with, with a lot of the attention coming to our region, being able to plant the Rolling Meadows flag loud and proud really is an opportunity with branding, where you can come up, it's not just logos, but really creating a unanimous design approach. It's, what do our email signatures look like? It's what does our letterhead look like? What do our, what does our city flag look like? What are our stamps, seals, everything that we put out there look like, and how do we build cohesion? Part of it is modernizing our city operations, so I talked a little bit about this room and the upcoming upgrades that we have here. You know, we have our new rolled-out website, but again, it isn't static, and websites do change over time. And as we use social media, how do we incorporate imagery into our social media that reflects who we are and where we're going as a community? I talked a little bit already about the brand infrastructure, and lastly, I think there's value in making a little bit of noise. You know, branding, if done properly and well-executed, really creates a lot of buzz, not only in the community, and I think really where a lot of this value comes is beyond our boundaries. It's how do we create that recognition, and how do people notice us in a way that we make a splash? Branding is very much a part of our day-to-day lives. As you look at this screen, I won't spend too much time on it, but I'm pretty sure everyone here recognizes all of them. Bottom left is our brand, part of the Salt Creek that reflects our Rolling Meadows here in our community, but our goal is, is not necessarily to create what the private sector aims at, which is to sell products and to put their product on the top shelf first, front and foremost. What we are really aiming at is what Alderman Kohler talked about earlier, place making. It's how do we set ourselves apart and really put ourselves out there, is who is Rolling Meadows, and who will Rolling Meadows be in the future? If you take a look at some of the municipal branding initiatives that have happened throughout the country, you take a look at Tinley Park. Tinley Park is known as a community with a music amphitheater, and they've really played that into their logo, obviously with the guitar built in there. Iowa City Airport, so my alma mater is the University of Iowa, the old capital of the state of Iowa, and so- And so they took an airplane, built in the old Capitol dome, which is a well recognized logo throughout the state of Iowa and beyond. Lancaster, California is a community that is celebrated for its tulip festivals and the presence of tulips. They've built upon that brand and did something unique by calling out that it's not Lancaster in another state. It's clearly Lancaster, California. Lastly, the city of Salida in Colorado has incorporated a heart as their logo. And so they are trying to reflect that they're a community of inclusion and that they support a diversity in their community. And they've incorporated that into their vehicles, into all of their banners, into much of the placemaking that when you go to Salida, you really feel that their brand is ever present. When you take a look at Rolling Meadows and some opportunities that we have, again, branding doesn't just focus on, on logos. It's, it's really all encompassing, but a couple of different perspectives to keep in mind as we go down this path if the council so chooses. Communities who have gone through rebranding, Mundeline is a recent example of a community near us that has, have incorporated their branding into their community gateway signage. And so on the top left is a gateway sign that we use oftentimes, which is the kind of, we call it the tombstone look in some ways that it's affixed to a number of different pole signs. On the right is an opportunity that, or the way that Mundeline has used their gateway signage, where they're taking it off of poles and actually putting it as standalone markers. We do have standalone signs. Mundeline does have larger signs as well in some of their primary gateway locations. But as we come up with a new brand, you can always incorporate some of those components into some additional new, newly designed gateway markers in lesser trafficked areas. Additionally, on the bottom right, you have the city seal that we've used historically along with our font. And so once again, you ask, you ask yourself, is this font reflective of what we are today? Do we want to take a look at different font options out there? It may sound silly, but at the same time, font is a very important part of, of a brand in the way that you express yourself and the image that you put out. Now going back to the opportunities and why now? I think a good opportunity that has really presented itself is this RMC squared proposed development. That developer has come to us with a desire to, excuse me, with a desire to incorporate Rolling Meadows' brand into this development. This developer has similarly done the Elk Grove Technology Park, which they worked very closely with the Village of Elk Grove Village to incorporate their brand into that design. Similarly, they've come to us and said, give us your branding design guidelines. How do you want to market yourselves to the 242,000 drivers who come through this intersection of Route 53 and I-90? To add perspective to how many people pass through this area on a daily basis, about 275,000 cars drive on the Kennedy Expressway in and outbound from the city. So we are seeing almost the equivalent of the daily commute to and from downtown Chicago in this intersection as of 2021 numbers that were put together by IDOT. So that is a good opportunity in which we want to say, what should our brand look like when they put it up in 242,000 vehicles? That's not people, that's vehicles, plus the number of people that are in them are going by. On the top left is our standpipe, which is actually located just to the west of the Gallagher headquarters in between the school health building. It's, it's very visible from I-90 as you're going by. That is scheduled to be repainted. We've pushed that back a little bit just so that we can have an opportunity to discuss with the council what our brand should look like. Because once again, given the traffic volumes in this area, as we pursue painting, we want to make sure that that painted standpipe is done so in a way that will be there for the next 25 to 30 years. Is, am I giving my numbers right on paints? Is it 15 to 20?
More so.
20 years, yes. Thank you, Public Works Director Ghostoff. So for the next 20 years, we do have our brand reflected. And it may happen that we rebrand even sooner than that. Lastly, on the bottom left, this is probably a sign that many of you are familiar with as you drive on 53. IDOT is planning a whole slew of improvements to bridges along Route 53. And as part of that have extended an opportunity for Rolling Meadows to incorporate some of our branding and design components into some of that infrastructure work. And so once again, as we are working with IDOT and thinking about what that should look like, we want to make sure that we have the brand that we want to reflect to all of those motorists who are coming by and through our community. Again, I think I touched on some of these. I did the B squared just to be buzzy and branding benefits. But again, it's placemaking cohesion, how do we draw ourselves together and really put out an image of cohesiveness? We are one Rolling Meadows, we're one community working together. It conveys a sense of identity. And really, who are we to the world? So when, when an investor, a placemaker or a site selector is looking for a location in Illinois and they're coming from Houston, Texas, which recently happened, Danabett is launching their grand opening very shortly. They relocated from Houston, Texas to Rolling Meadows. We want to put ourselves out there. And when people look at us, think this is a modern community that really takes, that really values its image and is a place that businesses should want to be in. Differentiation and competitive edge. So obviously, we are, are working in a competitive market in the Chicagoland region. And the South suburban region, the West suburban region, the North and Northwest suburban region are all competing for the same pool of corporate business entities that have a, a large pool of opportunities to select where they're going to locate their business. Again, putting out there that Rolling Meadows is a progressive community, a community that is professional and really forward thinking helps draw some attention to us. So that when those site selectors are narrowing down their selections, they're looking at not only the office space or the warehouse or industrial space, but they're also looking holistically. Who will, what will people think when they come to visit us? They're going to come through the city of Rolling Meadows and see the signage and see the infrastructure and all of the things that make us who we are. Placemaking and branding helps to drive that home. It enhances tourism and visitor experience. So we have a couple of our hotels, Aloft is a good example that just came online. We met with that hotel operator earlier today. They're doing very well. And one of the things that we'd love to do is have them be aloft Rolling Meadows. But I think by building that brand and really putting that out there, maybe they will make that change for us. But nonetheless, we want to make that, we want to make tourism a very big part of our community. And so as Arlington Park is redeveloped and hotel operators are looking at Rolling Meadows, they can incorporate the branding into that hotel, into their marketing materials. We're a member of Meet Chicago Northwest, which is a regional convention and visitors bureau that markets not only Rolling Meadows, but Wooddale, Arlington Heights, Schaumburg, Roselle. And so as they are putting materials out, they are using our brand in all of those materials. Talent attraction and retention. So again, this is on the recruitment side. So as people are looking to come to work, not only for the city of Rolling Meadows, but in Rolling Meadows, a brand really reflects a positive outlook. And then community engagement and civic pride. Much of this effort involves significant amounts of public input, just like every other topic we're talking about tonight. Coming up with a brand isn't, once again, something that happens in a vacuum. It's, it's something that is incredibly important to engage the community on. Not only in understanding who we are, but where we're going and who, how does our community vision, what is our community's vision and how do we incorporate that into brand imagery and the way that we represent ourselves to the community? So the next steps related to this would be to conduct an RFP. Branding is, again, a holistic and time consuming process. Our staff in house could scratch the surface at it, but for it to truly be done in a way that's professional and for us to get a branded, brand materials that reflect professionalism and really are high end, a consultant can really do that for us in a way that knocks it out of the park much better than I think our staff can in house. We've incorporated, again, we talked about this sooner earlier, ARPA parallel funds have $200,000 of funding available for economic development activity. We are estimating that for a fully comprehensive process for a branding initiative of about, a cost of about 40,000. Our process that we envision is to craft an RFP on what we are looking for the branding companies to provide to us. And then issue that RFP and where we're thinking, kind of the estimate to land is going to be in that 40,000 range. Functionally, there would be the community engagement processes. So the city council engaging with the staff, the business community as well as our residents, even at large, our visitors, people who want to provide input on this are welcome to. And getting that feedback. We'll work through that process to identify who we are and show the world where we're headed. Draft the materials, logo colors, collateral materials. Finally, receive delivery of those brand materials and incorporate. The incorporation process is very much an important step that I think some communities may not always do well. It's something that all of us throughout the organization have to drink the Kool-Aid on. When we incorporate a brand, it is very much a part of what we do on a day to day basis. Once it's, once it's implemented, and it is a large expense, we don't take it lightly, that we're, we're putting a lot of time and resources into doing something like this. So I'm happy to answer any questions. The direction we're seeking tonight from the city council is whether or not to proceed with issuing an RFP to find a consultant, to engage, to perform this branding initiative on our behalf. Upon issuance of that RFP, we'll bring back a recommendation for the city council's formal approval of a consultant. And thereafter, we begin the project.
Thank you, City Manager. Do we have any questions at this point for city staff? Go ahead, Alderman Koller.
No, I was saying, it sounds exciting.
Thank you, City Manager Sabo. Excellent. Go for it. I want to encourage everybody to do this and to look at it. I can tell you in my own personal experience with this, it makes a big difference to a city. And I've worked with a group called Civic Brand, which may be aware of them, Civic Brand, I think they're a Texas company.
I believe so.
On this for another city. And it makes a tremendous difference to the image of the company, of the community, but the image of the people themselves. Okay? And I personally, you know, I was just going to say a personal comment. I have my own brand. My nieces and nephews call me Uncle Mike of the Meadows. They always say, you know, where are we going to go today? They'll say, meet me in the Meadows, which means my house. So the Meadows has a kind of a brand personally. And that's what I mean by getting everybody to take the brand into their hearts in the city is very important. Very important to get the community to own that. Not just the city, not just the businesses, but the people become Kevin O'Brien of the Meadows. Jennifer Vinesiano of the Meadows. So I would encourage this 100% and I appreciate you bringing it forward to the council.
Thank you, Alderman Koller. Any additional feedback or questions? Okay, I do have a comment, which is regarding the presentation from, or the ultimate product that we expect to receive. So in addition to some of the deliverables that were listed here, I would like for us to also consider for the RFP, so where we have preparing draft materials, including logo colors and collective materials, to also provide not just summaries of the input that was received, but also any type of metrics to demonstrate the reason that we would make this change because, and to list solid reasoning behind that. Because although it sounds like we have some general consensus here with the council that this is a good idea, that we see value in this, I think it's important for us to communicate with our residents, the reason that we're pursuing this is not a nebulous reason. It's for these specific improvements and for these specific metrics that we plan on improving. And so to the best that we can in that RFP, I don't even know if we necessarily, like the, I know I don't, or if the council has specific questions to ask. But I'm sure that any consultant that does do rebranding will have those types of metrics that they can present to us and say, with the current branding, here are the risks and rewards. And with this proposed rebranding implementation, here are the risks and rewards. Additionally, regarding the implementation, I anticipate if we're working with IDOT and other markers with capital improvements, that it's not just going to be letterhead. And so I think it will be important in the RFP for the consultant to also present various, various ways for us to proceed. So for example, option one costs this much money and affects this. And option B affects, would cost this much and affects these specific areas. Because a lot of the markers that we've had in the past, and there's been a lot of council discussion, for example, on having built out wayfinding or entry markers into the city where there's solar panels, for example, that had been a discussion. Or others that would be illuminated versus not illuminated, or the ones that were posts versus not posts. And so changing that, we, I think is important for us to understand how much that's ultimately going to cost us as well. Not that it, that's necessarily going to prohibit us from moving forward, just understanding that, especially as we're going into the budget season.
Certainly. Yeah, we'll incorporate, we'll incorporate those items.
Excellent. Yes, Alderman Vinesiano.
Thank you. So the other thing that I know that we did bring up at one point through EDC was the signage throughout the community being cohesive amongst city, you know, like city of Rolling Meadows, Park District and other like library, any of those other that, yes, they're, they stand alone, but we are all intertwined. So having some collaboration with them would be very helpful.
We will follow up with all those agencies.
Thank you.
Good. Any other feedback or questions? Okay, if no more feedback at this time, let's look for a straw poll for those in favor of pursuing an RFP for a rebranding initiative. Okay, you have direction unanimous to proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, no signatures on the signage sheet. So we'll move on to the deferred third item or our last item for the evening, which is regarding the former fire station 15 at 3111 Meadow Drive and our next steps discussion. And to that, we will defer again to Assistant City Manager Glenn Cole.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So again, the last item for tonight is a discussion of regarding how to approach continuing to market and pursue the redevelopment of the city's former fire station 15. So as a bit of recent history, this building was built roughly in 1954. So it's one of the older buildings in the city, again, one of the oldest civic buildings in the city. In 2019, the city had it appraised, came in with a value of about $507,000. Lots changed since then. In recent memory, of course, 2019, the station was vacated when the fire department moved the new fire station. In 2020, the city hired a broker to market the property. In 2022, the city went not technically under contract, but started extended negotiations with one offerer in response to the city's marketing efforts. And then here a couple of months ago in 2023, those negotiations were ended by the city council. So this effort certainly predates me and it also predates Manager Sabo. In looking, we have tried to summarize the redevelopment goals. We have heard from the council throughout this process, again, bearing in mind some of this predates both of us. But the first is, and these are not in priority order, but the first we heard in reviewing these records is that we're trying to return this property to a productive use, to a revenue, to a tax generating use. The second is a bit of a balancing act, but we're trying to obtain a reasonable value for the property, given, given the city's desired uses. It should be said that some of these desired uses are more riskier than others. I mean, the, the best way to realize the market value of the property is the, the path of least resistance, which may not necessarily be what you want. So there's a balancing act, but we've tried to phrase that here. The third, again, is the other side of that balancing act, which is to try and recruit a user that's, again, works with what we see, what the city sees for the Kirchhoff Road Corridor. Trying to find a user that'll be an amenity for Rolling Meadows. Thinking restaurants, breweries, wineries, distilleries, other attractions that help draw people to that corridor. I will say too, in reviewing this information, we, we detected the preference of the council was to avoid residential units in any floor, any component. You know, I will say that's difficult in today's market, but that's something you can put into an RFP. And then finally, trying again to incorporate this with future planning, realizing that, you know, or to try and realize architectural landscape design that reflects this desire for a pedestrian oriented outcome for Kirchhoff Road. So we're here tonight really to ask you about these four items that we'll go through in order. So the first is, are these goals, these goals here, the right goals? In particular, we suggest that in, in our review, we didn't detect a clear message about if one of the priority goals of the city council is to retain that existing building and to reuse it. That may be tendered by offers, that may not be, but we think, we recommend that you should give a clear signal as to if that is a preference or an expectation or a necessity. The second is just timing. You can go back out to market immediately. That would be before you have a chance to do this corridor planning. That would also be in a, quite frankly, a very difficult financial market. And it may benefit the city financially or by quality of development or both to weight. The third is how to market the property. Previously, the property was marketed by a commercial broker. Some of the strengths and weaknesses of that approach are discussed in the memorandum. But for properties like this, it is common for a city to run a request for proposals process, which has some advantages and which we recommend should be considered for the next, the next marketing effort, whenever that is. And then finally, no matter how we market or when we market the property or what the goals are, there are some additional investments we, the city can make in making this property more marketable. So one is an updated appraisal to show the current market value of the property. Again, a lot has changed since 2019, for better or for worse. And an appraisal can help show us what the true value is of that property. We can also do phase one environmental studies, again, knowing uses that have been in that area and the expectation of lenders. This can only help us to avoid things during the due diligence period that would potentially, you know, derail a deal or allow a developer to exit a redevelopment agreement. With that said, Mayor Sanika, I think I would defer to you to lead this conversation.
Certainly. Thank you, Assistant City Manager Cole. So let's, can we go back to that slide that lists the goals? So let's, can we go back to that slide that lists the goals first? Because I think we should start there as a city council. So as Assistant City Manager Cole had mentioned, this has been a topic that not only started in 2019, but probably before that as well for some of us. So looking at these redevelopment goals that are listed here, are there any that we either want to strike, add, or change? Okay. So with that silence, it sounds like this is...
We're still reading.
Oh, we're still reading. Okay, sorry. Yeah, so again, the first one is returning the property to a productive and revenue or tax generating use. So, and for background behind that, if the expectation is that the city would leave that, or is that the expectation of a property owner who would purchase the property?
Yeah, I mean, I think any private redevelopment of the property is likely to realize happening, and it's a matter of, you know, there are some uses that will be, let me step back. So there are some uses, civic, religious, educational uses, that will not generate property tax, will not generate sales tax, right? There are some uses that may be beneficial, but not be as advantageous from a sales tax side, that will get property tax, maybe limit sales tax, and there's a gradation, of course. And so that would be, you know, we would frame that in an RFP as we would these other goals in trying to broadcast what we're looking for from a developer.
Understood. So for that first assumption, it's that we're looking for a tax generating, okay, everyone's just shaking their head yes, so that one's good to go. For the second, to obtain a reasonable value for the property, given the city's desired uses, which may be substantially less than the appraised or fair market value, is the, so can you provide a little bit more background on this particular quote?
Sure. So this is really, doesn't work its way into the RFP so much. Of course, we want to get the best value for what people are proposing, but this is more making sure that we have a shared, common assumption and foundation from the city council. Some, as I think Manager Sabo mentioned in his presentation, and along the way previously, you know, some communities will sell at substantially, you know, below fair market value for the development they're looking for. Many of the parcels, I believe, in Arlington Heights were essentially given away. And so there's a balancing act here between the economic return to the city, and then trying to incent, or attract, or frankly, allow to be possible, some of the most attractive uses that may come forward.
Okay. And so is that still the case? Okay, so we're getting that here. I am gonna go through these other two, because I think it's important that we actually confirm that we were heard as we think we were heard. So we'll go through the other two then. So the third here, recruit a user that will serve as an amenity for Rolling Meadows and its residents, such as restaurants, breweries, wineries, and distilleries, or other attractions, and to avoid residential uses in any floor or component of the redevelopment. Is that still the case as well? No residential for that property?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm in agreement with that. Do we have to add something based on the other session we have tonight about visitors? About that place making too? Like, clearly it's for the residents, but also we've talked about the other three topics tonight, about economic development, bringing more through. I don't have a clue how it'd be incorporated, but something where people would wanna come to it as well. Certainly residents are our number one priority, but with whatever gets billed tomorrow north, incorporate visitor traffic too. I think it's the only tweak I would make, unless it's implied, it's for, you have to be a resident of those to go get a slice of pizza there type thing. That's not the case, but yeah.
I see. And it's also, we want people to come, but we don't want them to stay. So no residential uses. Okay. So then that is...
Just, I mean, I understand that we don't wanna have a ginormous, you know, apartment complex, but I hesitate when I think of a developer coming in and wanting to put, like, less than 10 units on top of a, you know, really nice shopping or restaurant or something like that, knowing that this above brings in monthly revenue, just in case this restaurant doesn't quite make it, or something along those lines. So I really hesitate with saying absolutely zero. And I know that residents, I know it's your ward, have a real problem with additional residential units over there, but again, I just, to say absolutely zero, I would still think that we could see a plan that might have something that would be, that would be palatable for the area, especially if we're trying to make a walkable pedestrian area down here, you know, where these people can, you know, walk to and go to, per se.
Yes. Alderman Vinesiano.
I have a concern with adding more residential with the amount of residential that could possibly be going into the north. Do we start stressing the school that's in that ward? So if we end up with families in these buildings, and we end up with families up north, are we considering that? Does District 15 have the space to be adding all of these new potential multi-tenant facilities? I think we have saturated our downtown with so much residential that it'd be nice to have something that would be non, a new development that'd be non-residential.
Just to clarify, so for, when I refer to the north, can you clarify what that was supposed to?
So the plans that are out in public say there's gonna be multi-tenant facilities at what is Arlington Park.
I see.
District 15 is going to be housing those students. Is there going to be room, if we're putting all of those there, for us to be putting more in downtown when we've just finished building, knocking down businesses to build more multifamily units?
Thank you.
I've had this conversation with Manager Sabo, and I've also talked with, you know, the superintendent over in 15 for, you know, Lori Heinz, for things that are happening in my ward as well. And I think I'm gonna let you answer that, if that's okay, Manager Sabo.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to weigh in on this topic. So first, I think to talk about what Alderman Pris and McHale is bringing up with respect to the balance of having a ground floor retailer and a second floor residential type of development. Many of the areas around us are seeing mixed use proposals coming forward, primarily because the lending market right now has become extraordinarily difficult for what I will call the experiential uses. Restaurants, for example, we recently had one that had opened up and within six months had not made it. And that restaurant put a significant investment into that space and was unable to continue operating in it. While a restaurant that has been vacated can turn into a second generation location for another restaurant that follows, the banks are looking at those risks and really weighing them heavily. We had another proposal for a different restaurant along Ogonklin Road that ultimately chose not to move forward because of financing challenges that they faced. Some of the feedback that myself, Assistant Manager Cole, has received from the development communities, we've worked through these in the past, has been that in order to make the pro forma for financing work, oftentimes the banks are looking for different avenues or mechanisms by which a development can generate revenue to self-sustain and not run into a foreclosure. Given the risk that is involved with a restaurant operation, and it's not always the restaurateur's fault, sometimes it's the economy, sometimes it is the cost of food and people not wanting to pay the expense of eating at that restaurant. Restaurants change, and they close, and sometimes they will remain closed for an extended period. But I think one of the components that Alderman Pris and McHale is bringing up and is worth at least considering is the fact that in order to get a restaurateur that may put a more expensive build out into this location, they may be able to do so more successfully by incorporating some sort of mixed use. To speak to the stressors on the school, and I've spoken as well with the superintendent of School District 15, and in my conversations with her, what she's shared with me, and I can't put words in her mouth, so I can request for her to provide some feedback that the council can review, but in some of our conversations, she has shared with me that it's not that District 15 is against development and growth, what they would like is just an opportunity to be involved in that conversation so that they can incorporate it into their planning efforts. With what's happening in Arlington Park, and whatever the potential outcome is with maybe a new school, now might be that opportunity, knowing that there may be additional, a new school that might be coming as a result of whatever happens there. If we add additional units here, that may, and however they choose to move the boundaries of the schools, this may be an opportunity for us to parlay with whatever occurs there and work with School District 15 to create a little bit more of that downtown density and vibe that will support some of these ground floor businesses. Obviously, we defer to the council and will proceed in whatever direction the council directs, but we wanted to shed a little bit of light and share that perspective, just as we evaluate what the current market and economy looks like for development.
Thank you, Manager Sabo. Was there anything else you wanted to add, Alderman McHale, regarding that item?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm by no means saying that there should be some ginormous high-rise over there, but I don't think that it would behoove us to not look at any type of residential, anything on top of this, without having the opportunity to see what it could bring into the community. I agree. I don't want, you know, giant rental units and things like that, of course, but I just think with the businesses that we've already lost that have been restaurants, with how long we've been going through this process, with the firehouse in particular, I just, I just would like to not shut it down completely.
Thank you. Yes, Alderman Vinesiano.
Thank you. So I'm gonna do this twofold. Personally, I totally agree with you. I think that it is economically feasible to do housing above on the higher levels if they, you know, build the building higher, or whatever it may be. I question parking, because we already know that's gonna be an issue. But on this one, we're representatives of our ward, and my ward stands fast on this, that there is not to be any residential there. They do not care if it is above, below, next to, they don't care. I think that having such a saturation of the townhomes across the street has just really burned a bridge in the ward, and I don't want to sour any potential for any other business that may be there, due to those sour feelings. And so on this one, I have to go with what I've heard from my residents in my ward, and they do not want any residential there. So that's what I will have to support.
Thank you. Alderman Kohler.
Thank you, Manager Sonika. I think, I don't have a problem with these goals as they're written, I just have, would like to prioritize them. I think, it's my personal opinion, and I haven't been involved in this discussion as much as the rest of you, this is my second week here. But I would like to see Ward 3 and 4's ideas and plans for the Kirchhoff Road corridor before we decide what to do with the building. Because if we have a plan that is part of the economic development plan and part of the branding, and we can, you know, if something like the brewery concept is there, and we have a strategic plan for the downtown area, the corridor, what I call the corridor, did you call the corridor, then you can sell it. But I think individually, and it has more value, by the way, I think, if you have that image and the brand and what you want for the corridor. But without that, it's just an individual building. And I have seen other places where they don't know what to do with things, and then it's taken over by, you know, a closed resale shop, and you regret that you have that there when you could be a much bigger vision. So I would say prioritize number four on there, which goes in with economic development plans and recruiting, and the branding, and then go back and say, now, how does this building fit into that plan? And then I would say, let's, I hate to say this so early in my career here, but I would hold the sale and plans for it until we know what that plan is. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kohler. Any additional feedback on that so far? So we've now skipped the third one, just to go to the fourth, to say that there is support for realizing an architectural and landscape design that is consistent with the city's intended evolution of the Kirchhoff Road corridor, it's a pedestrian oriented corridor. So the fourth is quite contentious, so we'll come back to that, what we think about the fourth one. Yes, Alderman Vinesiano.
Okay. Since you skipped ahead, I was waiting. But I was going to say the exact same thing. I've said it since day one, we're in no hurry to sell this property, it needs to be the right fit. We own the property, it's, you know, it's not burning a hole in our pocket, so let's find the right fit. So I'm all in favor of holding on to it, doing the evaluations that we need, I'm all in favor of doing a new appraisal. Obviously, many things have changed within our community, and it's gonna change again in three years. So this may not even be decided in the next two years, we don't know. But I know that there is a right business out there that's going to buy this and add value to our community, to that corridor, to my ward, and overall with the development that's just to the north of us. So I am not hasted in making a decision on this at any means.
So with that commentary, it sounds like then, just so we can move forward with these goals to your very first question, or is this, is this what we, are those still consistent? And the answer, it sounds like yes, with the third, which we will have to revisit after seeing updates on the architectural and design, architectural and design plans for subarea planning in the Kirchhoff Road corridor?
Certainly. What I'd add too is, you know, we do have, our subarea planning exercise can give us a chance to explore this question a little bit more, as far as what development we can see without a residential component. We can have, we can put some of our resources, some of our study into giving you some more objective facts to look at around that, if that would be of interest. And that's true on the whole corridor.
It sounds like there's a very vested interest then, in including this property for the subarea planning for the Kirchhoff Road corridor then.
Okay.
I have a follow-up.
Of course. Alderman Vinesiano.
So I would challenge that, that again, I'm open to residential, but my challenge to that is that we've already had several discussions about parking just for business at that location. So if we were to even have a discussion about adding residential, how does that play into it when we already know we're gonna have to do easements and variances and whatnot? So I think in order for that to come back to us to discuss having the topic of residential in that, we need to have more information on that as well.
So that also kind of wraps up some of the other questions regarding timing and marketing. So yes to the additional work then, to include that. And for timing, we have a proposal from the fourth ward, Alderman Vinesiano, to say that waiting is fine, as long as we have information to move forward, which was supported as well by Alderman Kohler. And I'm seeing some nods as well around the table, so it sounds like then we don't need to do this tomorrow, we wanna make sure we're informed. And then, any others here? Regarding marketing, it also sounds like then, across the board, that we want to pursue additional resources to be able to determine what would be best to market for that use as well. Yes, Alderman O'Brien.
I don't wanna go down this rabbit hole, but I'm going to go there, since it's talking about the corridor. Like, do we have any indication, and it might be, I don't know if it's a Martha, like, they're almost like 1.8, 1.9 acres still sitting open in front of the pond, in front of the, do we have any idea, like, are they getting any interest on what might go there? Because I really do think it could tie together, because if we're gonna rebrand this corridor, and I'm not saying, for a long time, I've not been a big fan of municipalities owning and becoming landlords, I don't think that's a municipality's role, and I'm not saying we should go to bid on that open space as of tonight. But is there any activity there that we know that people are looking to put in a shoe store? I don't have a clue, but are we hearing anything?
Yeah, there's no step answers, we just wanna clarify, the space that you were referring to.
North M&amp;I Homes, just north of M&amp;I Homes is about 1.9, between Taco Bell and Senior Tacos, they're still just under two acres, I think, is the size of it, is like, so we wouldn't think of something competing going there, or something in tandem, that we could say, hey, we've got this fire station lot for sale, and they've got this. If you're looking for more space, we've got more to offer.
So we had a meeting with the broker for that property in late 2022.
Okay.
And at that time, the uses that had been proposed or had come forth were not compelling or desirable for the community.
Okay.
And so what we are currently doing is, I think, with this subarea plan, it will help us drum up that attention to the corridor, and we will work with that broker to say, we have identified what our vision is, this is very clear cut and exactly what we'd like to see. Put this out through your channels and help amplify it, and find us someone who will develop it in this way. There's been requests that have come to us about, you know, make the rest of it residential, which we've put that to bed right away as soon as it's come forward. You know, I think even without the subarea plan, the vision has always been some sort of commercial vibrant use in that area, and that's what we've put to the broker to bring to us. So at this stage, there hasn't been anything viable along those lines, it's our hope that the subarea plan will really set the tone for that and really hammer it home and draw attention from the development community to that parcel and the opportunity to develop it along the lines of our vision.
Great, thanks.
Yes, continue, and then Alderman Kohler.
Then just one more point too, is like, I'm fully in support of no hurry on this and doing the appraisal again. Could we also, like, I think I might have mentioned this prior too, can we look what it would cost us to demolish it too? Like, I think that's a viable option too, like, but to have it updated, like, what it would just cost to level it? Because it might cost us 100 grand, but it'll get 22... Because it might cost us $100,000, but it'll get 22 more interested parties in it, because it's not an expense. Hopefully, we'd be able to recoup some of that through the sale, but that's an option too, is, because we know it's roughly between $200,000 and $300,000 just to make the repairs. I think it was the write-up, is that, what does it just cost us if the city were to demolish it, and it's a blank canvas, for lack of a better term? I don't know if that's easy to get as part of an appraisal of what a demolition would be.
We could get quotes for what a demolition would be.
Hopefully not, because I think it's a great historic building, but that's an option that...
Yeah, we would go through just an informal quoting process and reach out to different entities that would provide us a, just anecdotal quote. We won't go through the formal process for it.
Thank you.
Alderman Kohler.
So the question is, a point of clarification, either City Manager Sabo or Alderman Vaziano, who owns that property that Alderman O'Brien was talking about?
Oh, M.I. Homes.
So it's owned by the people who built the house?
Correct.
So, fact data backwards, when the property was, former Dominix was sold to, before it was M.I. Homes, it was, before M.I. Homes, I can't remember. They sold it then to M.I. Homes, and the agreement was that that strip of property next to Taco Bell was supposed to be developed as commercial, but in haste, it was not, all the Ts and Is were not dotted, and so that was not fulfilled in their contracts, and now they just want to sell it because they have no desire to develop it as a development or commercial.
Thank you.
Taylor Morrison. There you go.
Hold on. Good history right there.
Yeah.
Thank you. So Alderman Kohler, your question was, who owns that property? Was there a follow-up, or did you?
No, I think she answered the question.
Any other questions regarding this topic? Okay. For city staff, did you have direction to pursue a, this is not RFP, what are we requesting? Oh, this was for the redevelopment review, so incorporating this into the subarea planning.
Yes, so to summarize, if I may, Madam Mayor, the direction I think we've received so far. I think we have support for the goals, again, with an asterisk on the residential component, and also noting here that the goals, as we understand them, don't necessarily include preservation of the existing building. For timing, we're hearing that this should wait until after the corridor planning is done. I don't think we've heard direction on the marketing piece, and we don't have to decide that tonight, but if there was a clear consensus, that would be one less decision to make in the future. And then additional work, it sounds like the council has support for that. Certainly, we wouldn't do an appraisal until closer to when this property would be marketed. The timing of a phase one or some of this other work is something that may be able to be ongoing as this planning study happens.
Excellent. Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the marketing will come after the branding, because I think when you have a brand of what you want there and have a good solid idea of what you're selling, you may find it's got more value than it does today, without any brand or concept of what it is except a building that was a former firehouse. So I think if we can get that branding done, City Manager Sabo, then I think we may have a better way of selling the city and that building and the concepts.
Yes, and since the demolition is on the table, what's also, I will have to probably revisit marketing as well in the future. I appreciate the drive for efficiency though. Thank you so much.
All right.
Yes, Alderman Vaziano.
The only thing I was just going to incorporate into the deliverables and what we're going to focus on, we're also incorporating the parking evaluation into the subarea planning evaluation, so just as one additional item.
Thank you, Manager Sabo. Alderman Vaziano.
Thank you. And I have talked to Manager Sabo about this. I've had some contact with potential buyers for the property, since it has come out in public conversation through council that the contract or lack of contract was fulfilled. And so I do just want to briefly have that conversation, that if we do get inquiries directly through the city, that I don't want to just shut the door because we've decided we're going to wait. I still want to, any inquiries that come through, you know, city staff be presented, because maybe that is that one opportunity that we've been waiting for. And being that I've had some personally reach out to me, and we'll be forwarding those on to city staff as well.
Thank you for that. So ultimately, yes, we would like to invest in planning, but if the right opportunity comes, it sounds like if we see a good thing, not to wait, is what I'm hearing as well.
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. Yes, City Manager Sabo.
So if we get any sort of proposal, we'll notify the council of it, whether desirable or not, just so the council's aware of one that's been tendered to us.
Excellent. Okay. We have no additional feedback? Again, no signatures on the sign-in sheet, so no additional comments? Anything else from city staff at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Then with that, looking for a motion to adjourn. So thank you, Alderman McHale for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and at 8:41, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.